This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so let's write about baseline configuration. Now, when we talk about baseline configuration, first thing that should strike your mind is, what is the basic organization structure of a company? When you talk about organization structure, there are certain points that we have to remember. Okay, first thing that you will remember is, so, the points that are not relevant currently, we will not be talking. We will be talking about the points that are relevant for us to start with. First, let me write company. We have to know what is the company that we are working for or what is the company that we are configuring for. Second, second thing that you have to know is your company code. Which company code you are working for? Under one company, there may be multiple company codes. And once you know which company code you are working for, after that you have to understand different other points or different other settings within baseline configuration. In the morning session, after company code, what did we write? Chart of account?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
We have written chart of account. Now, when we talked about company, we talked about a group. Company is a group, company code is a legal entity. Correct?
Yes.
Company is a group, company code is a legal entity. First thing that you have to remember is, what is your group? And under this group, which legal entity you are going to configure the system? Now, one point that you remember is, whenever you start your configuration for the first company code. First, company code configuration is always an end-to-end implementation. Okay, first company code configuration is what always? End-to-end implementation. When you attend your interviews, you must, you must have got a question, did you work any or did you work on any end-to-end implementation projects?
Yes.
Correct? You must have got a question, especially on your interview. That too, the first call that you get from the HR to schedule your interview, they will ask how many projects you did and did you involve in any end-to-end implementation project? Now, when they talk about end-to-end implementation, what exactly they mean? When we talk about end-to-end implementation, we mean the first company code creation of a group. Okay, in the group, whatever the first company code that you are creating, that is part of your end-to-end implementation. Now, your second company code onwards is always rollout project. Clear?
Yes.
First company code is always an end-to-end implementation project. Second company code onwards is always a rollout project. Now, why we have to talk specifically about end-to-end implementation and specifically about rollout project? Because tomorrow if you work for a particular client, now your client may have one company code, your client may have multiple company codes. But the business process of all the company codes will be similar. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Business process of all your company codes will be similar because all these are part of one, under one group. Now, this is called as your global template. What do we call it as? Global template or global solution. When you talk about global template or global solution, we mean that whatever the business process, the initial design that you are designing is common for all the company codes, even that you are going to create in future. Today, I am creating one company code, let's say after six months or after one year, I am going to create one more company code. For the additional company code which will be created maybe after six months or after a year or so, you are not going to discuss with your client in detail. So instead, what you will do, your client will tell this is the same business process of our existing business process. Except some minor process-related changes with respect to the new business. Now, only to the extent of the changes you are going to discuss, otherwise you are going to roll out the same solution that is implemented for your first company code. Clear? Whatever the solution that you have implemented for your initial company code, the same solution will be implemented for second company code. Here, you have to remember two points. Point number one, creation or definition. And point number two, I will say, assignment. Okay, first point, either you are going to create or you are going to define a setting in the system. Second point, most of the things that we define, we will be assigning it either to the company code or to the country. Yes, no? Right, if you are creating any setting that is not directly applicable for your company code, you must assign it. Now, while assigning this, how we are going to do this assignment? For your first company code, for your second company code? So that is where you have to differentiate between an implementation project and on a rollout project. If you talk about chart of account, how many type of chart of accounts we have?
Three types of chart of accounts we have.
One is operating. Second one is group. Third one is country chart of account. Out of these three chart of accounts, only one chart of account is mandatory. Which one is that?
Operating.
Operating chart of account.
Operating chart of account.
Operating chart of account. Correct. Now, I am going to write two company codes here. I will put DE10, I will put DE20. Assuming this is your Delhi, India, I will say this is Delhi, Singapore. Clear? We are going to create two company codes. And chart of account is created for Delhi, India or Delhi, Singapore. If this is your first company code, this is your second company code. First company code, this is your second company code that you are creating. Where are you creating your chart of account? Is this created for DE10 or is this created for DE20 first?
DE10 will create.
DE10, Delhi, India.
Alright, you are going to create you are going to create for the DE10 first. And you are going to do the assignment. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
For DE10, you are going to create the chart of account, you are going to assign the chart of account. When it comes to DE20, are you going to create the chart of account again?
No, sir.
Most of, most of the cases we use operation chart of account.
Correct. Specifically for this operating chart of account, are we going to create for DE20?
No.
You are not going to create chart of account?
DE102.
You are only going to do the assignment. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you have two company codes or if you have 20 company codes, you are going to create one chart of account. But this one chart of account, you are going to assign for all the company codes that you are using. Okay, now, this is about your chart of account. Next, when it comes to fiscal year variant. Are you going to create for first company code?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to create for second company code?
Yes.
Or it depends?
Yes, sir, we will create.
It depends or you will create?
It depends.
It depends.
Companies using the same fiscal year, then we can use that.
Correct. So which means here, when we talk about fiscal year, first thing that we have to understand is, for first company code DE10, Delhi, India, which reporting year we are going to use? Let's say you are going to use April to March here. And this is going to be April to March. You are going to create one fiscal year variant anyhow in the beginning or you are going to use one existing fiscal year variant. Assuming for the second company code, which is your Delhi, Singapore, if this Delhi, Singapore is going to use the same April to March, you are not going to create another fiscal year variant. Correct?
Yes.
If Delhi, Singapore is going to use Jan to December, are you going to create two fiscal year variants or one fiscal year variant?
Yes, we can, we have to create two.
You have to create two fiscal year variants because these two are using two different reporting structure, two different reporting periods. Now, certain settings straight away, we can tell that only one chart of account is enough for all your company codes. But certain settings like your fiscal year variant, you cannot upfront tell one fiscal year variant is enough for all your company codes. Because fiscal year variant is country-specific. In each country, there is a different, different reporting requirement. From which year you have to start your reporting and at which month you have to close your reporting is decided by the country local accounting law or countries' local accounting principle. According to that, you have to decide how many fiscal year variants you are going to create. Let's say, here you are going to create, here you are going to do the assignment. Similarly, here also. Okay, this is again dependent on the requirement. You cannot upfront tell this is how we are going to do it. Certain things you can tell upfront, this is how it is going to be. But for certain things, you cannot tell upfront. It depends on the requirement. This may be only assignment here, provided your second company code is also using April to March. If there is a different reporting period requirement, no other option, you have to create different fiscal year variant. Clear? So slowly, we have to start understanding on what scenario, on what conditions we are segregating the concept. Where we are creating a new entry, where we are not creating a new entry, why we are creating new entry, why we are assigning the existing one. So slowly, we have to put different, different questions to ourselves so that you will have a clear understanding. Try to get as many doubts as you want, try to have as many confusions as you want while you are learning only. Later on, you are going to accumulate all your confusions, doubts, and that time it will be very, very difficult. It is all about interrelated, interconnected in SAP FICO. Okay, if you understand point number one, you will be able to understand point number two, you will be able to understand point number three. This is one approach. This is applicable only in some scenarios. In the other scenarios, if you understand point number one, you will not understand point number two. If you do not understand point number two, you may understand point number three, which means certain points may not be interconnected. But once all these points are created, you have to connect all this. If you are missing out on any one point, you may not be able to understand the overall picture. But while learning a particular topic, we will not understand the impact of it. All the configurations, all the scenarios that you are testing, you will come to know at the time of reporting. Okay, when you are doing reporting, that is where you will come to know where things are going wrong. Whether everything is working as expected or not, is measured while doing the reporting requirements. Now, this is your fiscal year variant. After fiscal year variant, you will have posting period variant. Now, this posting period variant, what we are going to do here?
Yeah, sir.
You are going to create for first company code, you are going to do the assignment for first company code. What about second company code?
We will create, sir.
Fiscal year is different, then we have to create and assign.
If a fiscal year is the same?
We can use.
Then we can assign.
Then we can assign.
In any case, in any case, posting period variant is company code specific. irrespective of you are using same fiscal year or different fiscal year, your posting period variant must be separate for each company code for each ledger.
Okay.
Okay, if you have 10 company codes, if you have, if you put it here, let's say I will put DE10 until DE200. Okay? Now, let me put D01, will not have 200, 01 to 20. 1 to 20, how many company codes?
Two company codes.
27.
Sir.
20 company codes you have. Now, let's say all these 20 company codes are using Jan to December only. Everything is using Jan to December. Now, how many posting, how many fiscal year variants do we need if all the company codes are following Jan to December?
Only one.
Only one fiscal year?
Only one fiscal year.
Posting period, it is 20.
Correct, only one fiscal year variant?
Actually.
One fiscal year variant? Go ahead.
Ah, here my doubt is, is, is posting, posting period variant is not a global parameter?
No, it is company code specific.
Okay, but in every institute, they say that it is the global level, right? Group level, client level.
No, posting period variant is company code level setting, not global level, not group level. Okay, I am going to create. Yeah, let me complete this. We are going to use one fiscal year variant because in all your 20 company codes, you are going to follow the reporting structure as Jan to December. Now, Jan to December, for all your 20 company codes, you are going to assign same fiscal year variant. Let's say, D0 is your fiscal year variant. Okay, D0 is your fiscal year variant. For all your 20 company codes, you are going to assign D0, 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 D0. When it comes to posting period variant, this is your company code specific. DE01 posting period variant will be DE01. DE02 posting period variant will be DE02. Likewise, DE20 will be DE20. You can create one posting period variant for all the company codes, but that is not recommended for the reason. Now, each company code is independent or dependent?
Independent.
What?
Each company code is independent. You cannot create DE01 transaction in DE02. Can I do it?
No.
I want to see the balance of DE02 company code. Can I go to DE01 and then see the balance of DE02?
Not at all.
No, sir.
Right, if there is a data related to DE01, you have to strictly refer DE01 company code. Similarly, if there is data related to DE02, you have to refer DE02 only. Which means each company code will have its own independent data. So the data of one company code cannot be seen, cannot be viewed on the other company code. Let's say, if I am posting the transactions in different, different company codes, now there is no rule that every company code must close their accounting on the same date at the same time. Am I correct?
Yes.
One company code may have huge data volumes, the other company code may not have huge data volumes. I may be able to post only 10 transactions or 10 sales a day, but the other company code may be doing 100 sales a day.
Yes.
I will be able to close my month-end on month-end itself or first day of next month. On the other company code, I may be doing it on sixth day of next month. Now, you may want, you may get a requirement from DE01 that we want to close March. Now, when you close March, DE02 will come and say that no, please keep the mask open. Our entries are not yet posted. Possible or not?
Possible.
Correct? If you are using one posting period variant for all the company codes, you will get lot of mismatches, lot of clashes. That is not recommended in any project. If you are having one company code, you are going to have one dedicated posting period variant. Now, on the other side, assuming leading ledger is there, non-leading ledger is there. For leading ledger, let's say you are using IFRS. For non-leading ledger, you are using Indian Companies Act. Now, IFRS is common for 20 company codes. Correct?
Yes.
Now, this non-leading ledger is country-specific. Non-leading ledger is country-specific. Now, here.
Sir, why we need extension laser?
Extension, we are not going to discuss now. To discuss extension ledger, first we have to be thorough with leading and non-leading. Okay, it creates confusion even if we talk about extension now.
Okay, sir.
Okay?
Sir, for month-end activities, I have a question, sir.
At the end, you can ask anything not related to the point that we are discussing. At the end, I will give you time, you can ask any question.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's say for non-leading ledger, you are used, for leading ledger, we are using IFRS. For IFRS, all the 20 company codes are common. Now, here, Jan to December is common fiscal year. In this scenario, we are going to create one fiscal year variant. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Assuming for non-leading ledger, this is country-specific. Now, in this country-specific, let us assume your 20 company codes are part of 15 countries. How many countries? You have 20 company codes. These 20 company codes are operated in 15 countries. Which means in one of the countries, you may be having two company codes or three company codes. Clear?
Yes.
So don't get confused, 20 company codes, why not 20 countries? One country may have more than one company code also. According to this, according to this, how many fiscal year variants we need to create?
15.
It's 15.
If you talk about 15, we are wrong.
One, sir.
Because out of 15 countries, we have to know, let's say, I will put.
Mention what they follow the calendar or I think financially.
Correct. I will put country 1, country 2 until country 15. Now, in this country 15, let's say this is Jan to December, this is April to March, this is July to June, this may be September to August. Again, you may have Jan to December, July to June, April to March, Jan to December, April to March, July to June, something like this, assuming you are having. Now, out of this, what you are going to do, you are not going to create 15. There are lot of countries which are following the same fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
Right, what I am going to do, I am going to copy this, I will simply do a I will remove the duplicates.
Four we will create, sir.
How many we have unique fiscal year variants?
Four.
Four, so I am going to create not 15, I am going to create only four. Okay, so we should first think about the requirement. You are having 20 company codes in 15 countries. Okay, how many fiscal year variants do you create? You must talk about, you will have to see what is the reporting cycle, what is the reporting period in each of these 15 countries. Only then you will be able to decide how many fiscal year variants you are going to create. Let's say, January to December is used in some six company codes or six countries. Are you going to create Jan to December, Jan to December in six fiscal year variants? Is that practically correct? Yes, no?
We can assign same fiscal year.
We are not going to create six or five fiscal year variants only for the Jan to December. You are going to create one fiscal year variant which represents Jan to December. And in fact, here you will have to remember two points. Most of the countries will have point number one, Jan to December, point number two, April to March. These are most commonly used to fiscal years?
Yes, sir.
Now, for these two, you will have standard fiscal year variants. Jan to December, what is standard fiscal year variant?
K4.
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 K4. April to March?
V3.
V3. V3.
V3. Now, if you come back to the same point again, okay, you have leading ledger, IFRS accounting principle, you have 20 company codes. Are you going to create a fiscal year variant or are you going to use standard fiscal year variant?
Standard we can use.
Standard, sir. It is requirements or open period requirements.
Correct. So in majority of the cases, we will be using the SAP standard fiscal year variant, which is your K4. Now, tomorrow you may get a question in your interview. Let's say you are doing baseline configuration for a particular client for which the reporting cycle is Jan to December. And for non-leading, for local reporting purpose, it is April to March. How many fiscal year variants will you create? If you are getting this kind of a question, do not tell that you will create a fiscal year variant. Always mention that you will be using for Jan to December, what is the fiscal year variant standard?
Jan to December, K4.
K4, K4.
K4. And for April to March, you will be using V3. If you tell that I will create two fiscal year variants, then you may get a cross-question. What are those two fiscal year variants? If you tell I will create one for Jan to December, one for April to March, then you will get another question, are you sure that you will configure the new two fiscal year variants? If you tell yes, you will get another cross-question. Why don't we use SAP predefined or SAP standard fiscal year variants? Why do we need to create new fiscal year variant when these fiscal year variants are already predefined in the system? Now, when you get such kind of a questions, it will be difficult for us to answer. Right, wherever possible, you have to talk from the standard SAP point of view. When we talk about standard SAP point of view, with fiscal year assignment, nothing is going to change. There is no impact of using. of using standard fiscal year variant. Am I correct? You are going to assign this and your fiscal year variant is controlled by the posting period variant. You will have to create a separate, separate posting period variant for each of your company code. Now, in this case, number of fiscal year variants that we are going to configure in the system are zero. Corrector? In general practice?
Yes, sir.
You are going to configure number of fiscal year variants is zero, agree with me?
Yes, sir, already standard created.
But already we have predefined fiscal year variants, we will be proceeding with the standard fiscal year variants. And considering leading ledger, non-leading ledger, considering twenty company codes, how many posting period variants do we need?
Twenty, sir.
Twenty.
Fiscal year variant zero, posting period variant twenty or forty?
If we use this twenty company codes, we will create twenty, sir.
Two ledgers, leading, non-leading.
Forty, forty.
You'll have to create forty.
Forty, sir, okay.
You'll have to create forty posting period variants. Each company code will have a dedicated posting period variant representing each ledger. For leading ledger, there will be a separate posting period variant, for non-leading ledger, there will be a separate posting period variant. Clear?
Yes, sir.
You'll have to have separate posting period variant for each company code corresponding to each of your ledger, each of your accounting principle. Sometimes you may have to post one entry only in I F R S. If I use only one posting period variant for both I F R S and my local reporting, I may give access to the user to record the entry in either of the accounting principles. That may not be your requirement, your requirement is only to allow a posting in non-leading ledger only or only in the leading ledger. This is the common requirement in every organization, for us to meet this requirement, you must have, you must have separate posting period variant for each company code at each ledger level. Number of company codes multiplied by number of ledgers will be your number of posting periods. Clear?
Yes, sir, sir, can we, one chart of accounts, we can use twenty company codes?
Yes, you will be using only one chart of account and this one chart of account will be used in all your twenty company codes.
Okay, but physically it is different now.
Fiscal year, it is different.
Okay.
Because at fiscal year variant, there is right, at fiscal year variant, there is nothing happening at company level, your fiscal year variant is controlled by posting period variant.
Okay.
Okay, your fiscal year variant is only going to tell you your reporting cycle. Whether your reporting cycle is from Jan to December or from April to March or from July to June. But the control of your fiscal year is on the posting period variant. Now.
Okay.
After creating this posting period variant, now we understood on what basis you are going to create fiscal year, the number of fiscal years, posting periods, number of posting periods.
Yes.
What an idea, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Sir, you are asking us to assign the default fiscal year variant which is there in SAP, right?
Correct.
So, if tomorrow if I make some changes in the default fiscal year variant and if I want to refer it again, then I will not be able to do that, right?
In fiscal year variant, there is nothing to be changed because your fiscal year variant is only going to talk about whether your reporting cycle is from Jan to December or April to March, how many special periods you are going to use?
Okay.
Okay, if you are going to have any different requirement, we are not supposed to change the standard setting, you have to make a new entry.
Copy the.
If you want to make any change in the standard SAP, let's say, always remember, it is not recommended to change anything on the standard SAP configuration. If I go to O B twenty-nine, wherein we will create fiscal year variant. Let's say, K four is the standard fiscal year variant. Now, in this, in this, what it is talking about, this is K four, calendar year description, there is a tick on the calendar. This is not year dependent, number of posting periods are twelve, number of special periods are four. If you have to make any change in this, it is recommended you create a new entry.
Okay.
Okay, your client says, I don't want four special periods, I don't, I want only two special periods. In such a scenario, it is not recommended you change four to two, instead, keep this as it is, copy this K four, create another one. Even in your interview, if somebody is asking you, if your client is asking to make some modification in the existing setting, existing configuration, should we do that or not? Should we make changes in the standard configuration provided by SAP or not?
No, sir, we should copy them and then make changes, new, create new something.
Correct. Strictly, no changes in the standard settings are allowed. Tomorrow, because of this change, if anything goes wrong, SAP will not take the responsibility, they will tell somebody has changed the standard system settings, that is why these things are happening, that is why this problem is happening. Now, it will be a cross question to us that are you not aware that you are not supposed to change standard settings in SAP? Okay, it's always better, if you are using it as it is, what it is provided in SAP, use it. If you want to make any change apart from the description, description you can change, nothing is going to happen with the description. But apart from description, if you are modifying anything on the setting which will have impact on the transactions or on the reporting, please do not do it. Copy it, make a new entry of your choice, play with it the way you want. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Now, next one, when you go to posting period variant, which is your O B B O. Here, you are going to create posting period variants on the basis of company code multiplied by ledgers, corrector?
Yes.
Each company code, number of ledgers, you are going to create those many number of posting period variants. One posting period variant will represent company code leading ledger, the other posting period variant will represent company code non-leading ledger. If you have three ledgers for a company code, then you are going to create three posting period variants for that company code. Okay?
Okay.
Now, after creating posting period variant, what else we are creating?
Field status variant.
We are creating field status variant. Assuming we have twenty company codes. Assuming twenty company codes, are we going to create twenty field status variants or only one?
Twenty, sir.
We can use one, no.
Because each company has different different requirements.
Only one.
Create and assignment.
Assign.
And all the other twenty company codes will only have the assignment, no creation.
Yeah.
Reason? Right, now, let's say, company code, correct, company code one has a requirement to have a particular field as optional, the same field in the other company code, you may want it as required, possible?
Yes, sir.
For one company code, I need a particular field, for the other company code, I don't need that particular field. Now, in this scenario, it is not recommended to create a new field status variant, instead, you create a new field status group. What you have to do, use common field status variant, if you have a different requirement in different, different company codes, meet these all different requirements by creating new field status groups. If you go to field status variant screen, take over for field status variant.
O B C four.
O B C four.
O B C four. When you create a field status variant, you are not supposed to create a new entry. Right, you will find a new entry option here. If I click on new entry, I am not supposed to create this. The reason, if you create a field status variant, you will be missing the field status groups.
Yes, you have to copy the existing.
You have to copy the existing field status variant, whenever you are copying existing field status variant, you may get a question. When you create a field status variant, how you are going to create a new field status variant? You are not going to create a new field status variant by clicking on new entry. Instead, you are going to create a new field status variant by copying an S A P standard field status variant. When you are copying from S A P standard, you have to remember two parameters, two codes. Code number one is triple zero one, code number two is one thousand, somebody deleted the one thousand here. Either you have to copy from triple zero one or
Triple, uh, triple zero.
One thousand.
One thousand or triple zero, yes.
Right, either triple zero one or one thousand, these two you have to refer. Wherever you are copying. And when you copy this, and when you change this, you will get a pop-up, asking you to confirm whether you want to copy field status groups or not. If you tell copy all, system will copy field status variant along with the field status groups.
Yes.
If you tell this, system will only copy the field status variant without the field status groups. If you cancel it, it will not copy, it will not do anything. Now, when you are creating field status groups, what you are going to do, if I open this, if I go to field status group, now, here it starts from G double zero one. Okay, for a particular client, let's say, there is a requirement, they want to make different fields as mandatory or optional. To meet this kind of requirements, you have to copy the existing one. Okay, and make it as if you are copying from G double zero one, make it as Z double zero one. If you are copying from G zero sixty-seven, make it as Z zero sixty-seven, clear?
Yes.
Don't go by the sequence, Z zero zero, one, two, three, four, five, don't go by that logic. Go by the logic, go by the logic with the same code with a Z at the beginning. Clear? And in this, change the status the way your company code wants it. Optional, required, suppressed, whatever the way they want, change it, tell them to use this group in such kind of a G L accounts. Because your field status group is assigned at which segment of a G L account? At chart of account segment or at company code segment?
Company code.
Company codes, sir.
Company codes, sir.
Field status group is assigned at company code segment of a G L account. Which means, the field status group that you are assigning is valid only for that particular company code. Clear?
Yes, sir.
So, here you are going to create one field status variant, you are going to use it for all your twenty company codes. If there is any new requirement, you are going to create field status group in the same field status variant. Is that clear?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What is the next setting?
Tolerance. Tolerance group members.
Let's say you will have to create tolerance groups. Now, these tolerance groups are created at company code level or at commonly created for all your company codes.
Commonly.
Company code level.
These are common.
Company code level, sir.
These are at company code level. If you have twenty company codes, each tolerance group must be created twenty times?
Yes, sir.
How many type of tolerance groups we have to create, one, two, three?
Three, sir.
Three.
You have three tolerance groups, you have what are those three, G L tolerance?
G L tolerance, customer vendor tolerance and user.
G L. Customer vendor and then employee or user tolerance.
Correct.
Now, these are, these are only the technical settings in SAP to avoid certain standard validation. If you don't maintain tolerance, system will not allow you to proceed to record any transaction. Okay, we will just bypass this tolerance, we will not use this functionality. Since without the tolerance group, system will not allow you to create any transaction, you are going to create it. Okay, if I wanted to record any transaction in G L, I have to maintain a tolerance group for G L account. Right, now, this tolerance group is going to be used to offset your debit and credit mismatches. Where do you check G L tolerances?
O B A zero.
O B A zero, if I go to new entries, here I am going to give my company code, I am not going to give the tolerance group. If I give the tolerance group, I have to assign this tolerance group inside each G L account. Right, wherever you are doing a tolerance group, this group must be assigned in the respective master. If this is G L tolerance, your G L account must be assigned with the G L tolerance. Now, here you are going to update difference in debit credit posting in which currency?
Local currency.
Company code currency, I N.
In company code currency or in local currency, in short, according to our D E one zero, Del India scenario I N R. This is setting is going to be valid only for, we put F one. Revenue difference, right, this line you read, on what? This is used on what, on clearing?
Difference.
Now, clearing is applicable for P N L account or for balance sheet account?
P N L account.
P N L.
Clearing is applicable for P N L or balance sheet. Clearing is applicable strictly for balance sheet account.
Balance sheet, yes, sir, yeah.
Right, clearing is strictly for balance sheet account, in balance sheet account is clearing applicable for all balance sheet accounts or selected balance sheet accounts.
Selected balance.
Select, selected.
What are those selected balance sheet accounts?
J R, J R, heading account, bank subaccounts.
Payables, receivables.
Customers. J R I R.
Now, now, can open another screens.
Which is intended open item level.
Correct. G L accounts which are maintained as what account?
Open item.
Open item.
If you go to control data, wherever you tick this open item management.
Yes.
If you put this open item management, only for that account, your clearing is applicable, otherwise not. Am I clear?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Point number one, clearing is applicable only for balance sheet account, so straight away, any expense, any income is rolled out. And within balance sheet, this is applicable exclusively for the G L account for which there is open item management. And within balance sheet, this is applicable exclusively for the GL account for which there is open item management enabled. If you do not maintain this open item management, this is not going to be used. Now, when you are doing clearing. It is applicable for, sorry.
It is applicable for reconciliation account also, in reconciliation.
Any recon. Any reconciliation account is a by default open item management. For reconciliation, you will not be assigning it, all your reconciliation accounts are by default open item managed.
Yes, okay, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Now. Here, this.
Need manual clearing now, sir?
No, it is not about don't need manual clearing, this talks about. Let's say I have. One. Open item. In GL account. Okay, for five thousand. Clear, I have an open item in GL account for five thousand. Now, anything in open item of a particular GL account will have to be created.
No, sir. It should be.
Yes, no?
An expense account, right? Expense account or.
Clearing entry must be passed.
Correct.
Clearing entry must be passed because any open item will have to become zero, will have to become what? Your open item account must show the zero balance. To track whether the account balance is becoming zero or not, you are going to maintain an account as open item. To check what is the current outstanding, how much we have to pay or how much we have to receive. If I pass five thousand here. Is this becoming zero?
Correct.
Alright, now is my debit credit correct or there is any mismatch?
Correct.
Correct, what if I put four thousand eight hundred rupees? What is the difference?
Mismatch.
Short of.
There is a difference of two hundred. Now, whether you are going to receive this two hundred or you are not going to receive this two hundred, you want to close the account. If I am going to receive this two hundred, I am not going to close this account, I am going to keep two hundred as open balance?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Yes.
Now, let's say I am not going to receive this two hundred, out of five thousand, only four thousand eight hundred will be received. The remaining two hundred will be knocked off, it will not, it will no longer come to me or I no longer pay this, I want to write it off. Now, to do this, automatic clearing, this two hundred will have to be checked with your tolerance limit. On the debit, on the credit, what is the maximum amount limit or the percentage limit that I have to check? If I put, let's say. Hundred here and three percent here. Similarly, I will put three percent here, hundred here. Now, am I maintaining both percentage and then the amount?
No, sir.
On the system, did I put? Now, which one system is going to consider? Now, what is the amount here that we are trying to record, five thousand? Right, case one. One hundred, direct amount that we declared here, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In this second case, three percentage. Now. Case two will be three percent of five thousand.
One fifty.
One fifty. Now, let's open this. What is this?
Which one is the lowest?
Which one applies? Highest or lowest?
Lowest.
Lowest.
Lowest? Is applicable. So here, system will take either hundred or one fifty. If you are maintaining both amount and percentage, it will calculate both. And whatever is least, only that amount is excluded. And this amount will go to a different GL account that I will show later on. You'll have to maintain one more setting in which you will declare a GL account where this tolerance limit value should go and hit. Because unless I account this two hundred, I will not be able to match the debit credit.
Yes, sir.
Right, so this two hundred is showing debit balance or credit balance?
Debit balance.
Balance. Credit balance. Sorry, credit balance.
Credit balance, sir.
No, it is debit balance, it is plus. Now, if you have to post this, if you have to post this, you have to put debit or credit to this two hundred. This two hundred will be made. Sure, debit?
Credit. We can. Credit side, sir.
Difference.
It will go to credit.
Would be more to credit.
It will go to credit. If I put debit, if I do a total now, it is still giving me two hundred?
Yes, five thousand two hundred.
Right, so I have to put this on the credit. If I put this on the credit, now if I do a total, it is becoming zero?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, you'll have to put this on the credit side. Now, system will check this side of your tolerance. And it will check this amount, it will check the percentage, whichever is least. That amount will go to a posting, it will go to a GL account that we are going to define in another setting. Normally, this we will not use it. This is no longer in use. Okay, people may ask this question only to the extent of checking your understanding. Whether you are aware why we create tolerance group or not? Why do you create tolerance groups? Nobody will ask, how do you create tolerance group, what is the T code for tolerance? Make sure you are able to explain, this is used for clearing purpose. In short, this tolerance amount is applicable only for the GL open item accounts. And that too in local currency posting, not in foreign currency.
Sir, one second, sir, that time line item automatically it will be created, the difference amount?
Yes, correct, for that difference amount, GL account will come automatically, for that, we will maintain one more setting wherein you declare a GL account.
Okay, thank you.
Clear, so tolerance will check before posting any transaction, whether you are authorized to record that entry or not. But in most of the cases, we are not going to update any amount in the tolerance groups except one tolerance. Out of these three tolerances, two are lower limit tolerances, one is upper limit tolerance. Which two are lower limit, which one is upper limit?
Sir, I didn't get your points, could you please repeat once again? That depends on the amount.
GL vendor.
One is your lower limit, the other one is upper limit.
Yes.
Lower limit is. Least amount is taken. Upper limit is.
Highest amount is taken.
Higher amount is taken. So, GL.
Employs.
Customer vendor is lower limit. Your employee or user is higher amount. What is the tolerance group for employee or user?
O B A three.
A four.
Employee.
O B A four.
O B A four. If you come to O B A four, normally what we will do here, you will put hundred or you will put all lines?
All lines.
All lines.
All lines, what if I put only five hundred here?
Uh, if the document amount is.
Only allow five hundred only.
See that, then it won't allow you to post.
Correct, if I put only five hundred, if I am trying to record a transaction above five hundred. It will not allow me to post that entry because this is the upper limit, if you see here, upper limit for posting procedure.
Yes.
Amount, anything beyond this amount is not accepted. Okay, now only in the upper limit you are going to maintain the amount, but for the lower limit, you are not going to maintain. You are only going to maintain your company code and then post it. If you don't maintain this is setting while posting the transaction, it will give a message, tolerance group is missing. Okay, it will give a message with this table, T zero forty three table. You will get at the bottom. T zero forty three followed by the account type, K, S or D. Now, after tolerance, what else we will create?
Document.
Account.
So what is the. Cash discount adjusted to fill. Last one.
Which one?
Cash discount adjusted to the last uh, filled. In real time do we use or it's?
We don't, we don't use.
Same.
We don't use it.
Okay, okay, then no need to explain.
Okay, these we will not use, we will only use that all lines, we will mask it. Okay, next one is your. A document. Splitting. Now, this is important. This document splitting, let's say you have twenty company codes, you will do twenty times or you will do one time?
One time.
It is a chart of like all level.
Right, your document is splitting is not at company code level, it is at. Chart of account level, which chart of account level?
Operating.
Operating.
Which? Operating chart of account level, we are going to create one operating chart of account for all our company codes.
Yes, sir, we can create.
Now, in order to create document splitting settings correctly, you must have created your chart of account correctly. If your chart of account is created properly, your document splitting will be correct, your transaction posting will be correct. Your reporting requirement will be correct, reason, when you are creating any. Let's say, if I am creating my trial balance, if I creating my P N L, if I am creating my balance sheet. Trial balance will have. Some headings. Do you maintain any headings in the trial balance or you put every account as closing balance?
No, sir, we will put some heading.
What about P N L?
Expense ending.
What about balance sheet, now what kind of headings are there in your P N L? Don't tell only expense, one side, income, one side, then upfront you will be rejected if you tell P N L headings.
Direct expenses and direct expenses.
Let's say direct expenses, correct?
Operating, non-operating.
Operating expenses. Non-operating expenses.
Operating income, non-operating in.
Right, operating income, non-operating income, Forex loss, Forex gain, depreciation, miscellaneous income, correct?
Right, financial expenses.
Financial expenses. Now, these kind of headings will be there in your P N L, similarly in your balance sheet, you have fixed asset, current asset, cash account, bank account. Stock account, liabilities, bank loans, fixed deposit, retained earnings. Other payables, accounts payable, accounts receivable, advance to customer, advance to vendor, yes, no?
Sir, in the company.
These are all.
Company in the following company are two thousand thirteen format only, sir. Balance sheet.
Yes. If they are doing it in India according to that Indian Companies Act, if not according to I F R S.
Okay.
Okay, now all these headings you will have to gather first, the first thing that you will have to know before creating chart of account in S A P. You have to know this accounting headings. What are the P N L headings, what are the balance sheet headings? These are also called as your. Schedules. You call it as T B schedule, you call it as P N L schedule. You call it as balance sheet, anybody heard this term?
Yes, sir, I know, sir.
Yet? Anybody who is preparing trial balance, P N L balance sheet, they represent everything with the term called schedule.
Sometimes mentioning the more node points like.
Correct. Correct, sometimes you'll have to men- mention the node points, you'll have to put attachment wherever applicable, let's say. In your balance sheet, you are representing. Some H D F C bank, let's say you are representing some. Thirty four lakhs, what is the proof that your bank account has thirty four lakh? I am not supposed to maintain the amount just like that in my balance sheet, everything that you represent in accounting must have a supporting document. How do you support this thirty four lakhs? By what? What do you attach for this? You will have to attach. You'll have to attach what? Bank statement. So like this. Every organization, every user will prepare their financials. Tomorrow, if you are working on any project for S A P Fico, you will have to discuss about all these points. End of the day, if you are a Fico consultant, if the balance sheet is not telling, if the data in the balance sheet is mismatching, values are coming wrong, you have to verify it. You have to backtrace from your balance sheet, which account balance is showing incorrect value. Take that account, what kind of entries are posted there, whether everything is posted correctly, all these things we have to validate. Now. When it comes to your document splitting, document splitting is dependent on which start of account?
Operating chart of account.
Operating chart of account, when you are creating operating chart of account, there are four settings. Alright, your operating chart of account will have four settings. What are the four settings? First one is.
Creation of a previous chart.
Create chart of account, second one is.
Assignment.
Assigned chart of account. Third one is.
Creating groups.
Account groups. Fourth one is.
Retained earnings.
Retained earnings account. Now, out of all these points, this is very, very important. Account groups is important. Never create at the beginning if you are creating asset. Liability. Expense. Income. At beginning, if you are creating like this for the purpose of practicing how account group is created, accepted. Later on, if you are creating these four account groups, you will find these four account groups only in your practice company code. Tomorrow, go and check any real company code, ask anybody if they find these four account groups. Or when they go to F S double zero. Type description, if you open this, you will get only four or you will get a big list.
Big list.
In real time, I will get big list.
In real time, you will get a big list, now this big list is part of your. This. Based on this, you are going to decide how many account groups you are going to create. If somebody is asking you on what basis you will decide how many account groups to be created. For everything, we should not tell this is client requirement, client will tell me, I will do it, you are wrong. Only for certain areas, you have to tell this is based on the client requirement, client will provide the data, but what is that client is providing? Alright, so whatever client is giving, we are not supposed to create it blindly, right? You also have to validate whether it is correct or wrong. Whether this is in alignment with your S A P system or not. So those are. Basically, your. T B, P N L, balance sheet schedule. So those are basically your T B P N L balance sheet schedules. So even if you Google with sample balance sheet schedules or sample P N L balance sheet. You will get lot of balance sheets on the Google. Look at that, check how your balance sheet is prepared. In what format you will, you will have different, different headings, side headings, correcta? All these headings, side headings, we have listed. At least thirty to forty account groups must be created in your company code. Minimum thirty to forty account groups must be created. Okay? Now, based on the account group, you are going to define your document splitting settings. Because you have to classify your accounts based on the document splitting characteristics. If I go to S P R O. Financial accounting. General ledger. Business transactions, document splitting, the first setting. Classify G L account for document splitting. If you open this, give your company code. If you open the item category list here. You will get a list. Now, all your P N L balance sheet T B, in short, your account groups must be categorized under this. Based on this, when you are posting a document, system will allot or system will derive the profit center. For some kind of entries, if your document splitting settings are defined properly, sudden entries are not possible. Okay, for you to record certain type of entries, you will have to be aware of document splitting functionality. Otherwise, the system will stop you posting from that entry stating item category zero four two zero, zero four zero zero. Zero one zero zero, zero three zero zero is missing.
Yes, sir, it will show error.
It will give you item category, these errors it will give you. These numbers it will give you in the error message. When you look at these error messages containing this number, it should immediately strike your mind. This error is coming because of document splitting. Now, to fix that, you have to know which G L account you are using. And come here, check what is that G L account group. If it is asset, liability, income, expense, in that what kind of asset, whatever it is. And for which item category this is tagged. And considering this item category, you have to check what document type are you using for the G L account. Okay, what document type you are using? Your document type also will control your document posting. If you are using incorrect document type for a particular item category, it will not allow you to post. When we say it will not allow you to post, system will not derive the profit center. You will get an error message. Item cat- profit center is not filled in, item number so and so. There are different reasons why you get these errors. Okay? After that, you have to know this document splitting characteristics for general ledger accounting. In every organization, this is how it will be. Profit center is mandatory, zero balance is enabled. This is hundred percent maintained in all the companies. Usage of this mandatory field, zero balancing for business area, very, very rare and segment will be used. But profit center is must, usage of segment and business area is optional. And if you go back. And you will not use. There is something called constant. Do you find anywhere constants? Yeah, edit constant for non-assigned processes. Can you see this? Yeah, that I will tell. We find this edit constant for non-assigned processes. If you open this. Here, if you open anything, let's say zero cash, assignment of values. Segment or business area or profit center. This is nothing but your default profit center. Wherever system is not able to split, you can assign a default profit center. But this default profit center is maintained at what level?
Controlling.
Controlling area. But is profit center accounting part of controlling or financial accounting now? Profit centers are part of F I or C O?
It is part of C O, right?
Now, currently. From new G L onwards, profit center accounting is part of F I.
F I, okay.
When I say F I. If I open controlling. I am able to see profit center accounting here under controlling.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Because profit center accounting is there in controlling, I am telling this is part of C O. Now, if I go to. Enterprise structure. If I go to definition, if I go to financial accounting, here I have profit center.
Yes, sir.
Right, if I go to controlling, do you have profit center in controlling?
Yes, sir. Both state.
Profit center, this is operating concern.
Okay.
Alright, so from new G L accounting onwards, from E C C new G L onwards. Profit center is now part of financial accounting or F I module. Now, according to that.
Okay.
Your constant for non-assigned processes, if you are using profit center as mandatory. You are not supposed to maintain at controlling area level because if you maintain this at controlling area level. How you are going to create controlling area if you have twenty company codes? Are we going to create twenty controlling areas or one controlling area?
One controlling area.
One controlling area.
Clear, if you have. Twenty company codes, you are going to have one controlling area. This one controlling area is assigned to twenty company codes. Are my statements correct?
Yes. Yes.
Right? Now, according to that, if I want to put any default profit center, if I maintain a profit center. Now, if I put controlling area, now for twenty company codes, I am going to maintain same controlling area?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Now, with this screen, can I have separated default profit center for each of my twenty company codes or it is not possible?
Not possible, right?
It is. If that controlling area assigned to that company.
For each company code, it is not possible, all company, it is applicable for all company.
Right? It is not possible for us to maintain profit center separately for each of the company codes. For the reason, we are using common controlling area for all the twenty company codes. Now, this option we will not be using if you want to maintain default profit center. Here, you are not going to maintain it. Instead, you will maintain default profit center. Anybody know the transaction code? Starts from F A G L.
Three K.
F A G L, three K E H. Here, it will ask you to input your company code, you have to give your company code. And then you have to maintain the account number and default profit center here. Okay, this is option number one. Option number two, you will have O K B nine. In O K B nine also, you can maintain default profit center. But in O K B nine, we can maintain default profit center for any account or only for cost element.
For only cost element.
Only cost element.
Here, you can maintain G L account only against.
Only cost.
Cost element. And if I go to detail per profit center. Let's say if I select this, if I go inside the profit center. Okay, so even if I go inside. Let me put three. Here also same thing. Again, it is asking me to give cost element. Right? Now, constant, if somebody is asking you, why do we use constants on your document splitting? Tell that in case if system is not able to split a particular profit center. You will be replacing or substituting the profit center based on the constant value. If system is able to split, it will take that profit center. If not, it will take the constant profit center. Which will be updated in F A G L three K E H transaction code. Now, after this. You have zero balance clearing account. If you open this zero balance clearing account, you have to remember this account key triple zero. What is this account key? Triple zero. Now, this account key triple zero, people will ask you in your interview. Literally, they will ask you to tell that. At which level you are going to maintain zero balance clearing account. What is the item category on the top?
Item category. Zero one double zero.
Zero one double zero one and account key triple zero. You select, if you go to accounts. You give your chart of account, you will have to assign a G L account here. Now, you will get certain questions like. On what basis or at what condition you are going to maintain account determination or you are going to maintain G L accounts? On what combination? Then they expect you to tell on item category, chart of account, account key levels. At this level, you are going to maintain zero balance clearing account. Now, in your interview, let's say somebody is asking you about a document splitting. This is mandatory topic to be questioned in any interview that you attend irrespective of your experience level. Am I correct? Every interview that you face, it's a mandatory topic. Right, if somebody. You must have to talk about zero balance splitting. When you are talking about zero balance, they might ask you. Where do you maintain this zero balance clearing accounts? On what basis you will be assigning it, then you will have to tell this. They will also ask you the accounting entry. For zero balance clearing account. Okay, this is one you'll have to see. And when you will have to maintain this zero balance clearing account. This will be maintained only if in your document splitting characteristics, if you enable zero balance.
Yes.
If you enable this zero balance, system will take a checkpoint to make sure that at profit center level. Debit credit is becoming zero. If I don't take this, I can put debit to one profit center, I can put credit to another profit center. Okay, your account balance must become zero at profit center level also. If it is not becoming zero. System will bring your zero balance clearing accounts to balance the account at profit center level. This I will show practically with the accounting enters. Okay, now go back. After this, in your document splitting, you have to click on activate document splitting. Now, if you see somebody deactivated this. If this is deactivated, whatever the settings you do in your document splitting will not work because it is deactivated.
Yes.
It has to be activated, you have to press enter, splitting method will be twelve. This you have to remember. This also you will be questioned. What is the splitting method that will be used? So, your standard splitting method is twelve. In every project, we will be using this standard twelve only. Okay? And sometimes if you find any constant here, you will get error messages in your practice system. Make sure there is no value maintained in constant. Okay, if you maintain constant here. You have to update the constant value here. Where is it? Here you have to update the constant values. Now, there you have additional settings called extended document splitting. Now, you may also get questions, why do we use extended document splitting? Now, before. We have seen different, different document types, different, different settings in the classified G L account for document splitting.
Yes, sir.
Right? Now, some kind of accounting entries are not permitted based on the system setup. When I say some kind of accounting interests are not permitted, let's say if you debit customer account, if you try to debit. Let's say. I have a debit, I will take a credit. Assuming I will debit. Customer, I will credit sales. Is this a valid accounting entry?
Yes, sir.
Yes, no?
Yes, it is valid account.
If I debit. Customer, if I credit bank, is this?
No.
Is this a valid entry?
Yeah, we are, we are, uh. No, sir. We are giving money back to customer, right?
So what if when making payment to the customer?
Customer.
Let's say you are refunding to the customer.
Will be.
Yes, yes.
David. If you are refunding to the customer. But if you are refunding to the customer, the entry is correct only.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Right? Now, normally, when you tried, try in your company codes recording these kind of entries, check what is happening in the system. Whether system is allowing you to record this kind of entries or it is stopping you. If system is allowing, it is fine. If it is stopping you recording these kind of entries. Now, according to your client, according to your business process, this is a valid scenario, agree? You are refunding to the customer, you will have to debit the customer account, you will have to credit the bank account. But system may not allow you to record this entry. In such cases, you will have to define the settings in. Extended document splitting. Okay, in this you have splitting methods, splitting rules. Assigned document splitting, the other things. If I go to splitting rule. Which splitting method we will be using?
Twelve.
You will be using it well. So, from this method, straight away you go to twelve. Come to page down, go to twelve.
Go to position.
Okay, now here I am able to see twelve. I have to look at the accounting entry that I am going to pass. Let's say I am passing customer account and then bank account. I have to see my document splitting. Settings, the first one, classify G L account for document splitting. I am posting, let's say to a customer account. What kind of customer account it is? Okay, based on the customer, I would have assigned the respective reconciliation account. Local customer, domestic customer, third party customer.
Correct, sir.
Now, that G L account is falling under which category? That category is assigned to which item category? That one you'll have to take. Second one, bank. This bank is what is my number range for bank. This bank account group is assigned to which item category? Taking those, you'll have to open that respective. If it is customer, let's say I assign zero to double zero, select this. Click on item categories to be edited. Here, do you find bank anywhere?
No, sir.
You find bank? Bank is not there. So, if you try to use customer invoice. Okay, if you try to use customer invoice, when we talk about customer invoice, you are debiting customer or you are crediting customer.
Debiting customer.
Debiting customers.
When you are talking about customer invoice.
Debiting customers.
Debiting customer.
You are debiting customer. When customer account is there, system will split your clearing entries. System will split your customer to customer, it will split taxes, it will split withholding taxes. But is this considering the bank account? Is there any category called bank?
No.
If bank is not there, when you try to pass this entry, it will not allow, it cannot split the entry, it will not accept. It says customer account on the debit side, bank account on the credit side, it's not defined here, such kind of entry is not allowed. You have to comment modify the setting here. Okay, if you select, let's say customer. If I click on base item categories, if I go inside, now you have different things. In this, bank is missing. If I open the dropdown here. Do you find bank accounts?
No.
You don't find bank accounts. Now, let's take the other one, let's say payment. You will have to take payment, let's go inside payment. And if you check inside payment, you have cash account, do you have customer account here?
No, sir.
There is no customer account. If I go inside the cash account. I go here, do I have customer?
Yes, we have here customer.
Right, now you will have to check different combinations and you will have to make the settings properly. Because when you are making any changes here. When I am making any change, let's say here. You get a message at the bottom, what message it is giving?
Do not make.
Make any changes.
Do not make any changes in bracket S A P entry. You are not supposed to make corrections the way you want to make here unless you are very clear with the requirement. Unless you are clear with the impact of your changes. If you are playing with these kind of settings, if something goes wrong, S A P will also tell we are not responsible. Okay, whenever you are making any changes on the system, especially configuration. If you get any messages like this, do not ignore it. Considering that's a yellow message, I will press enter, I will be able to save it. Am I able to save it now?
Yes.
But if I ignore it by looking at the color of it yellow, then I may be at risk. You must know the impact of it before you save such kind of interest. S A P also will tell you, we have given a warning message at the bottom. To give you an alert.
Here I got a doubts, sir. While using document type D G, we can post a credit memo, customer credit memo, right?
When you post a customer credit memo, what is the accounting entry?
Customer account data to bank.
Credit memo.
Or credit, sir.
Credit memo, you will get bank, credit memo is nothing but sales written. Ultra entry of your sales.
Sorry, sir, sorry. Yeah. Sales account data to customer.
Right, so like that, there will be some different different tricky points. And we have to catch these simple, simple tricky points and you have to explain these points only. Okay, if somebody is asking you about the different requirement that you faced, the challenges that you faced, take one of this. Tell that this is a support ticket that you got it. And definitely, you will get questions on this only. One or two minutes, your interviewer will try to ask you different different questions on this. What was the requirement, why they were posting entry like this, how you did this? Such kind of questions he will ask you. Am I correct? If you get such kind of peculiar scenarios, if you are talking, you will get cross questions on your points only. In short, you can manipulate your interviewer by giving certain kind of points wherein they are definitely going to ask you cross questions from the points that you are talking about. Now, with this approach, you are going to have interview under your control on the topics that you are confident about?
Yes, definitely.
Right, so you have to pick such areas and then talk. Only those areas, definitely the other person will put immediate cross questions. Why you did like that, why not like this, why like this, what is the requirement, how you achieved it? You did not convince your client, they will put different questions. Answer every question confidently. Because you would have seen practically on the system, you will not get confused, you will not lose your confidence. Okay? So, in short, this document splitting is maintained at what level? At chart of account level. One time, this is maintained for all your company codes. This is not company code specific. This is chart of account specific. If you have twenty chart, sorry, this is chart of account specific. If you have twenty company codes, you are going to maintain this is setting one time, correct? This one time setting is going to control twenty company code postings, am I correct?
Yes.
Now, we have to be very, very careful while defining these settings. That is why, before we create a chart of account, let us ensure that we will gather minimum thirty to forty account groups. So, everybody is going to give one or two account groups so that we will. There or we will list out around thirty to forty account groups. We are going to define the same account groups. If your chart of account is created properly, it is very, very easy for you to decide, design your balance sheet in S A P. When you create balance sheet in S A P, S A P will not know how your balance sheet should be represented. What are the headings of your balance sheet, am I correct? I have to have assets, fixed assets, accumulated depreciation. And then my current assets, inventory, all these things, S A P does not know. But if you have all these account groups defined, defining your financial statement version, in short, your balance sheet is very, very easy. Now, how many G L accounts we will have in any project in general?
Thousand plus.
Thousand plus, keep this number in your mind, you are going to have one thousand plus G L accounts. If your chart of account, account groups are not created properly. If your chart of account, account groups are not created properly, you will have a very big tough time designing your balance sheet. Because there is no proper account group, there is no proper logic. For every account, you have to put manually, from this account to this account, this number to this number, there may be shuffling in the numbers.
In real time, F I consultant, he will create account groups.
F I consultant only.
Okay, M I S people, they will create, right, in a. Some, some companies.
No, any change in the balance sheet as F I consultant, you will receive a ticket for it. If somebody wants to change any G L account from the financial statement version. Or if somebody wants to add any new G L account in it, it's a, it's a consulting task.
Okay.
Okay? Clear so far whatever we discussed?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so slowly, we will list out all the configuration, what configuration setting we are going to do at what level? We have written all this, right? So, in general, you will have three level settings. One is your client level setting. Second one is company code level setting, third one is country level setting. Some are chart of account level settings, but this we don't do. A chart of account level, you don't maintain any setting. In short, you are going to decide or you are going to maintain the account determination. Except document splitting. Now, for all this, we have to understand which is setting is maintained at what level and what level setting is going to give you a hint whether you are going to create one entry or multiple entries. Okay? All right then, let me stop this recording.